That one works.
Is that the one that's bad?
Call the meeting to order, begin with the pledge of allegiance. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Wyndham Board of Education. This is the regular monthly meeting for the month of November. And we will ask first for any revisions to the agenda.
Uh, yes, we're gonna add underneath the board reports to talk about meet the birth at Minnesota Wyndham for that on December sixth. And then the other one is we need to add at bottom for discussion, the new OSHA requirements for employers over a hundred. And go through a few things that I've noted out as we've worked through this that you need to be aware of.
Okay.
That you probably agree with working for employers over a hundred people. Should we have to?
We have to.
You have to listen to this, sorry. You have to agree with it, you have to listen to it.
Okay, so we'll do the EA meeting or discussion on the board report and then we'll add the OSHA report at the end of the meeting.
I'll move approval for the revised agenda.
Second.
Motion by Joel Bordewick, seconded by Barb Jones to approve the agenda as amended with those two additions. Any questions? Now we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion passes. Item four is the acceptance of donations. Have recorded a list this month. And we first want to thank all these people for their donations, contributions to our school for various activities. And I will read those. Two hundred dollar donation from Trinity Lutheran Church designated for backpack program. Three hundred and twenty dollar donation from American Lutheran Church designated for backpack program. A flute valued at three hundred dollars to the band program from Joni Fishnick. Five hundred dollars from Shrama Law for robotics program. One hundred dollars from Bank Midwest for robotics program. Five hundred dollars from Fortune Transportation for robotics program. Seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Kiwanis for the robotics program. One hundred dollars from United Perry Bank for the robotics program. One hundred dollars from Hedman Chiropractic for the robotics program. One hundred and eighty dollars from Omeria Lewis for a student in need fund. Five hundred dollars from Ameriprise for adopt a classroom for first grade class. One hundred sixty-four compartment lunch trays from a St. James School District valued at approximately four hundred dollars. Fifty-five dollars from Bethany Lutheran for backpack program. Two thousand dollars from Wyndham Area Foundation for the winter play. One thousand two hundred and seventy dollars from the Wyndham Area Foundation for K five art room enhancements. And eighteen hundred dollars from Wyndham Area Foundation for youth soccer field equipment. Total of that list comes out to nine thousand seventy-five dollars. A motion to move that resolution.
Move the approval with much thanks.
Second with much thanks also.
Motion by Bruce News, seconded by Barb Jones to approve the resolution as presented. And thank all the people for their donations and contributions. Any questions or comments? Now we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Nobody for open forum?
Correct.
Correct. Item six, approval of the consent agenda. Motion to move approval of those items, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Joel Bordewick, seconded by Angela Clausen to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any questions on any item? Now we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion passes. Item number seven, administrative reports. Mrs. Frank, read pre-K five.
Good evening, board members. Wyndham Elementary hosted grandparents day on August twenty-fifth. Students gave tours of the school to their grandparents or special friends that were in attendance. The experience ended with refreshments and cookies in the commons and a great time was had by all. Uh, the PTO hosted a trunk or treat event, which was also a huge success. Um, it was hosted in the bus loading zone, uh, last week, oh, a week, week ago. Um, it is estimated that about four hundred students were in attendance, so it was a very fun event. The Baker Square Pie fundraiser orders have been collected and pie pickup is scheduled for November twenty-third from three thirty to seven. Thank you to the elementary PTO and the middle school advisory for hosting this event. Uh, looking ahead, we have Veterans Day program scheduled for Thursday at nine thirty in the Blue Gym at the Middle High School. Uh, students have been practicing songs during music class for this event and they are ready to go. Um, once again, our students at the elementary have filled the bucket with Eagle pride cards. Remember, students get Eagle pride cards for showing respectful and responsible behavior. Um, when the bucket gets full, we celebrate and this time we're going to celebrate with an outdoor field day. Um, teachers signed up for different times that worked in their schedule so students could go outside and experience the event. And lastly, we have soaring eagles starting tomorrow, actually. Um, so it's an after-school program for students that are achieving below grade level. It will meet from three fifteen to four fifteen. We have one teacher for each grade level and almost one para for each grade level, so we had a good turnout for staff there. Um, students that need math support will attend on Tuesdays and then students that need reading support will attend on Thursdays.
Questions for Mrs. Frank? The kids have been very active. If not, we'll go to Mr. Joyce for the six twelve report.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, included at the top, I've just included our community update, the Eagle Eye. We send that out in Spanish and in English, so um, some of you that are parents obviously get that in your, um, in your school email, or in your email, I should say. Uh, we send that as a Sky Alert, but uh, those are linked for those of you that haven't seen it already. Um, we had the end of the quarter last, uh, last Friday, um, and so we are in the second quarter. Um, finalized grades are due for the middle high school on the nineteenth. Um, that's two weeks, um, consistent with our standards-based practices, so um, as Ms. Frank stated, the Veterans Day program is this Thursday. We're excited to get that back. Um, our, uh, fine arts department, our, our music department has been working with the, um, American Legion to make sure that we can honor their wishes with, with the musical performances and also, um, Rod, Representative Hamilton will be here speaking. Uh, so we're excited to hear from, uh, from a statesman, um, this Thursday about that, so we hope that all of you can join us for, for that great event. Uh, juniors, this is kind of a date change. On the Eagle Eye, we indicated that this was November sixteenth, but as we looked at the, at the crystal ball, we realized that, uh, and actually Ms. Letcher pointed out to me that the juniors, because of a couple of things, were missing a couple of days this, um, and they were always kind of A days, so we moved the ASVAP test to Wednesday, November seventeenth, and we worked with the military to, to move that day, but our juniors are all taking the ASVAP test on Wednesday, November seventeenth, so. Uh, today, our juniors and seniors had a great day. They went to, uh, Mankato and Mrs. Squires organized a, a college visit to South Central Technical College, uh, and also to Minnesota State University Mankato, so, um, those students, uh, that had already kind of picked a college that were seniors and they know where they're going, a couple of them stayed back, but we, you know, we kind of realized that a lot of our students had never been on a college campus before. And they had really a great day today, just, uh, kind of learning what a four university does and also learning what a technical school does and what it has to offer, so um, early, early results were in and really good day for those kids. So, thank you to Mrs. Squires for organizing that. Um, as Mrs. Frank pointed out, we, we do have the Baker Square, Square Pie fundraiser that'll be, um, distributed on the twenty-third of this month. Uh, my number is actually short. We had a few come in. We actually sold about twenty-three thousand dollars worth of pies, uh, which is consistent with some of the years pre-pandemic that we were selling pies, so we did pretty well, so I had Peggy kind of pulled the historical numbers and we did well, so last year for comparison, we sold ninety-seven hundred dollars worth of pies. So, we got a lot more pies to hand out on the twenty-third. That'll be fun.
If you are bored and like to hand out pies and talk to people.
Yes.
Come to the CTE center. We'll be handing them out on drive-by.
Yeah, and we all, we kind of prepackage them, so it's pretty easy. Just gotta know who the, who's coming and we grab their bag and say, 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 have a great Thanksgiving, so. It's a good event. Hopefully we get good weather, so.
Serious on the volunteers. We could use volunteers.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, next week, I know, I don't know if, um, any on the board are going, but I'll be at the MREA conference, so um, that's where I'll be next Monday and Tuesday out of the building, but I'll be at the MREA conference. I don't know if any of you are going. I know, I think Wayne is going, but Bruce is going, so there we go, Bruce. Uh, we have a guest speaker coming to speak with our juniors and seniors next week. Uh, the Southwest Initiative Foundation in Pick had an opportunity. Is there having Jeff Gold? He's an author and kind of motivational speaker. And they, we had an opportunity to, uh, to book Jeff as well. Uh, so he's gonna be coming in and, uh, working with our, just talking to our students for an hour about motivation as, uh, juniors and seniors and, and talking about finishing strong and motivation heading into post-secondary careers, so uh, it was a free opportunity that they had and we said, absolutely, we'll, we'll bring him in and talk to our juniors and seniors, so uh, that'll be in the lecture hall next, uh, Thursday, I believe, so. Uh, and then finally, uh, I know we had approved the Honor Society for Robotics and we had talked about some um, cords that they would wear, uh, and, and some, it was requested that some guidelines be drafted for, uh, for graduation dress and what kind of goes into what gets approved and what doesn't. So, I kind of put together just draft guidelines for, and these, this is consistent with what we've practiced, but it just puts it down in writing and it's something that, you know, the board could look at and consult with us on, obviously, and, um, and then we have that in writing to be able to tell students, this is what's approved and this is what's not. Last year, for example, I had somebody, um, asked to wear something that didn't have anything to do with the National Honor Society. It had something to do with just a, you know, the culture that they wanted to wear, and I said, no, we, we remain consistent with just school stuff here, you know? And, um, pre-approved cords through Eagle Scouts, things like that, but then as we were talking, it's like, we don't have anything written down. It'd be nice to have some guidelines that I could say, this has been approved, this is what we have, so. Uh, so what I have in front of you is the draft guidelines that, um, myself, as well as Mrs. Squires, our assistant principal, uh, and then also, uh, so Dr. Carbo, and then Cheyenne Beck also kind of helps Mrs. Squires organize the graduation ceremony. But this really just puts into writing what we've already kind of practiced, so. I'm not gonna read every one of those. You guys can certainly read those, but do you just have any questions?
I know it was questioned and I did say, see here earlier too, that the Robotics Honor, Honor Society is on there, so that's nice to see.
Yeah, you know, we, we, and I, I will be forthcoming with some, um, approval requirements for Honor Societies in the future, 'cause I know that the robotics one kind of came to us and maybe it was a quick procedure to approve them, but um, as I've talked to Mr. Wormstead, I think it'd be good for us to have some guidance on, you know, what goes into us approving an Honor Society, so that when future ones, if they do come forward, we're kind of guided by some, some, some writing or policy that we want to follow, so. The robotics one was pretty straightforward in my mind. A good opportunity for some students that are already involved with a school-affiliated activity, so that was a key one, and then they have access to some scholarships too, and I think that's really good for students.
So we'll be bringing forward something for the board to approve that they'll put in the handbook for any Honor Societies that have to be approved in the future? And that way we have a set guideline and we can all of a sudden start fluctuating GPA's or citizenship or requirements and it goes six different ways and we have twenty-three different Honor Societies, 'cause I did a search and I found eight right away with varying, um, ranges of qualifications for that, so. Um, we'd have to, we just want to set that up so it's a lot much clearer and easier for the board when things come forward.
Yeah, and the two Honor Societies we currently, you know, recognize, the National Honor Society, which has been recognized for decades, obviously, and then the, the one that was just approved, the, the Robotics Honor Society, which encourages STEM educational leadership with a group that we already have that's very active within our school. And then students that are in that obviously have that access to scholarships and opportunities that they wouldn't normally have and um, so those are the two that we've approved so far, and then the Honor Grad or Eagle Scout are really the only cords that we're approving at this point, so.
So when I read it, I'm like, oh, I missed that all the other years, 'cause it looks like pretty much what we've been practicing, um, we're just formalizing it.
Putting it into writing. Yep, that's exactly right. And it will help me, to be honest, 'cause we do get requests from parents, and I get requests from students. Can I decorate my hat? Can I, can I? So it's easier for me to say no because it's now in board-approved policy.
And we'll have to cross-reference, so I think there's an MDE guidance that's out there that required, that was in a small piece of statute on, um, Native American dress.
Oh, sure.
I think we have to check on that one is all. That may not be referenced in this. I'm just, also just dawned on my head that, that may be by state law, you have to require certain things, certain cultures, so we need to verify that, I think.
Thanks, everyone.
Any other questions for Mr. Joyce? Thanks, Brian. Then we will go to Superintendent Report, Mr. Wormstead.
Okay, so I'll start right away with the COVID update on that. Um, so currently, actually, this is at eight AM that day I sent this out, so today, um, at the end of the day, we had thirty-one total students so far this year, four students currently active. Um, cases, then we have six adults and two students currently active, so slightly different numbers there as a whole. Um, when you look at our numbers that are in my, the board packet. That's fairly consistent. We see sometimes groups of two or three, and then also we will have a run for a while without anybody on that, and then we'll see a group of two or three not always in the same grade levels, uh, throughout the, just the way the cycle's been going. So, um, we'll have a couple come off on the thirteenth, one come off on the tenth, so we'll start seeing those numbers. Just do that slow ebb and flow is what we've been seeing. But for us, you know, six, six cases at once would probably be right near the high mark. I think seven at one time is the most we've had this year. For like a day or two, we had seven. Um, next piece, MDH Vaccine Clinic. I was contacted by the, uh, Commissioner of Minnesota Department of Education asking if the Wyndham School District and hosting that for a community-wide piece, uh, for access to the COVID vaccine for ages five through eleven. Um, that called that, uh, board chair with this, got back to them because he needed short notice on that. I said, yes, we could do it if we could do it on a Saturday, 'cause we're not gonna cancel more days of school for a vaccination with this or try to overlap that, um, with what we're doing in school. So we're working with Des Moines Valley Health and Human Services and MDH. We were able to find Saturday, November twentieth, for the first dose at the elementary school, and then Saturday, December eleventh, for a second dose. Um, we just received the registration information and we'll be having that out by Wednesday noon, uh, which will go to Des Moines Valley Health and Human Services. We have to put into slides and advertisement pieces and it'll go out to all the parents and email with that. Uh, remember, this is a parent choice for this. Also, that means a parent has to be present and sign off for approval for this, just like any other vaccinations that we have had, whether it be flu or anything else when we've done that. Speaking of flu and meaning as flu immunization, um, we have coming up, um, as we did in the past, uh, during parent-teacher conferences, Tuesday, November twenty-third, three thirty to eight thirty, Wednesday, November twenty-fourth, eight AM to three thirty. Um, may get vaccinations for adults and children at the elementary school. Of course, again, parents have to be there for that immunization for the flu. Um, this will be helping provided by Sanford Clinic. Um, you do need to bring your insurance to that one, uh, for that. So, any questions on?
Wayne, you said that the, this is brought up by the parents to have this?
No, I did not say that. It says called by the Commissioner of Education, um, Heather Mueller, and asked it for our region because we had a two-county area, and we tend to be in that center of that county area, asked if the Wyndham schools would like to do this for that, be a host site, not actually run it. So, we set that up. They're gonna run it. They bring people in. We have medical professionals from our area that are volunteering their time to run that and give the shots there.
Now, what happens if the kid has a reaction?
That's why the MDH and Des Moines Valley Health and Human Services are there to do their protocols for that. And that's why they're running as medical professionals and not me as a superintendent.
So, you think the school might be looked at by some parents as encouraging this?
That may be a perception of that. It's an opportunity, but it's still a parental choice. A parent can walk in with their child or not walk with their child and register ahead of time.
Why don't the, uh, why don't the parents bring their kids to their doctor, their own private doctor clinic? Why, why, why are they using the school?
Because they'd like to, uh, do a larger area mass of students for that. And this is not just for the Wyndham students. This is for Jackson. This is for Heron Lake. This is for Worthington. This is for West Rock Mountain Grove, Red Rock Central. I can keep on naming more districts you like, Mount Lake, St. James. If the parent chooses in those areas, they have a central location to do that on a Saturday. And the next thing is, is because they're trying to do it outside work schedules. I encourage a Saturday, 'cause we're a three-shift town. We have three shifts at Toro. We have two shifts at the, um, uh, packing plant. And that's also something that affects a lot of parents in these communities, 'cause that's where they work, so. Makes sense?
Yeah, well, the citizen last week had the, uh, line, uh, toll as far as, um, poll and sixty-two percent of adults are not in favor of it.
That's okay.
That was in the citizen, so I'm wondering why.
I agree. It's an unscientific poll. I don't know what you pulled that was, 'cause I actually didn't read that, sorry, citizen, on the front page. Um, with that, but I get it. There's people that are gonna be opposed. Uh, I'm just gonna say that, you know, we're offering an opportunity for people to make a decision themselves.
Yeah, well, the thing is, it's important to have the parents there.
They're required to be there. It's not if, it's required.
What do you project that will cost the school to set up, pay the custodians and get things set up for that?
Actually, our plan is to use our forty-eight thousand dollars we received from the state for nursing and vaccination clinic, or vaccinations, and we plan on using that to offset the entire cost of it. Over time, everything that takes place that, so if we have whoever's there working, we'll look at their wages and we'll put them through the time clock, or if it's an extra day on the side, it's one of those things that we'll use the, um, state funds to pay for it, so it doesn't cost us anything. Other than our just effort and time to set this up in advance.
Other questions on that?
I think, um, it's important too that the community understands that we're not picking a side. By offering this as an option, we're showing we haven't picked a side when we're the other, whatever your opinion is. It can be your opinion. We are not choosing for you.
And it's no different than anything else at the board. We've had to do this last year. Last year I had people upset that we did all the protocols for safety. I received phone calls and emails this year because we're not doing enough for safety. The idea is we're trying to find a path for success for people to make a choice what they're gonna do. I've had calls with parents, says, I'm not gonna send my kids to school until everyone can be vaccinated. I respect that. Last year I had parents call and say, I'm sending my kids and if they have to wear a mask. I said, I respect that. That's your choice as a parent. This is no different than we've operated the last two years of saying, here's an opportunity for you to make a choice for your child to get the vaccine. We're just providing the opportunity. You make the decision. To do it or not do it. Simple as that.
Newspaper and radio, can you note that? If you will.
Well, I don't think there's so much noting that. I think we just as a voice, as, as, as.
No, no, that, and what you just said, and, and Joel reiterated that, um, we hear it from both ends in the school. And that this again is leaving people up to their freedom of choice. I, that's just a really good thing. Yeah.
So, I'm gonna, are we good with that one now? All right, we're right on that one, all right. Daycare. I think this has been an issue in all of my fourteen years here, is access to daycare. We've lost five daycares in the last year. Um, daycare has been in a crisis state. I don't know if you can make it worse than a crisis state for our community. Uh, I truly believe that we need to be maybe a leader and focus on what's taking place for daycare. I know that EDA has worked on some different things. But every time we come around this conversation, we look and hope someone's gonna pick up the ball. I'd like for us as a district to convene people together, uh, to say, we don't have another two years to hope and wait for someone to do something. We as a city, the county. We as a city, the county, large employers, um, need to really look at saying, what are we gonna do, how are we gonna get this done, whether it's run. And we're maybe not thrilled about the answer, if it comes down to that, and maybe it's not us, hopefully not, but maybe the school does, but we gotta figure out how to do it without a loss. We cannot run the program like we do preschool right now at a ninety to a hundred thousand dollar loss, we can't do that. Okay, we're serving kids, that's a service for education, we know that. This is a great service also, but we gotta figure out to make that a little bit more fruitful for everybody involved. Whether that's in private organization, we find space, I don't have the answer, but I think we really need to say, we need to drive to an answer. Whether it be, um, our large employers, our public, um, agencies at school, county and city, um, our healthcare providers, there's a lot of people, a lot of smart people are, um, to finance through our school, finance through our local banks. There's a way to get this done, we just need to get in the room and start having those conversations and, and not settle and hope, hope for something in the future. And hope somebody's can come pick up that, somebody else will do it. Uh, we're to the point where we have to get this done. Um, it's probably six to eight years later than it should be. And so, um, I'm, I plan on hosting some meetings, including board members to come and wa, uh, have that and talk about what we truly need and what we can possibly do together. It's a big, it's a big bite, and it's gonna take donations, it's gonna take volunteerism, it's gonna take public capital, it's gonna probably take private capital to get this going. But I think we really need to figure out this, cause it's, it's an economic driver for us to have daycare or not have daycare, just as much as housing is. So, questions and comments on that one?
Yes. Um, I've been a part of that discussion when we were talking about Highland and the uses for that, I think a lot of us have been. Does the city have any interest in joining in on that, I know that it was bantered around with the, uh, joint meetings that we had. But that might be kinda productive, begin to engage the city and the county levels at their capacities that they have.
Yeah, I, I think that you're right, we as, uh, public agencies need to do that, but I think we need to broadcast the net further and bring more people together. Um, no offense to our own public agency or any other ones, sometimes we look around and talk about what we think should be done and hope somebody in the private sector will pick up the ball and do it sometimes. I think we really need to set some target dates, really push hard, bring in Southwest Initiative Foundation. There's some other areas that are doing some great work on this and helping communities that have helped other communities in southwest Minnesota. Um, I just think it's really time for us to, um, lead that. And yeah, I'm asking a lot of the school to say, we're, we're gonna be a strong voice for this, is what I'm saying, this is Wayne's voice, super tense voice. Um, I want to know if there's objections to the board saying, we need to really start pushing this, cause it's, it helps every private sector, helps every public sector. It supports our families and communities to be more vibrant place to live. Whether that's multiple small ones, a couple of large ones, I really not concerned which one it is, but I, I, another one closed, is gonna be closing this spring, that's gonna put a lot of pressure on people. Um, we're constantly seeing this, but we, we're not spending a lot of time on finding final solutions. So, I just think it's time for us as leaders to lead. And get something done. How's your backs feel for this lift? This'll be a big lift for our community as a whole, not just, not just this school, it's for everybody. All right. You're probably happy I'm gonna be out of the office for a few days after seeing those, those things that are coming through, so we have a lot of stuff going on, um, right now, but I'm gonna be going to M R A. We have as a teacher, we have, um, uh, Mr., um. Mr. Carlson's going, uh, Mr. Joyce is an admin, uh, board member, uh, Bruce is going, so we have everybody represented from all three agencies that actually are part of M R A. I can't say this enough, M R A is the best advocacy group that we have for rural schools, it represents teachers, administrators and board members, it's the only group that does this. Hope we continue that support and we, and we have been strong leaders in that as a past president for this, and then we presented up there, we've done a lot of things at M R A and I hope we continue that role as a district. All right, then. That's all I have, any questions for the, for me?
Any other questions? Then we'll go to, uh, Board of Education reports, we've got the Buildings and Grounds meeting, and you see there the solar meetings, and. Anybody was at one of those?
Tomorrow, November ninth at two thirty, we have a conference with Peter Lindstrom from U of M Regional Sustainable Development. And Jason Walker from, um, Southwest Director, Regional, um, S D R C, I'm forgetting the last initials there. Just talk about what, what it takes to do this, the big meeting is November eighteenth at ten to noon, I did send out a link to that, but the link is dead, you have to copy and paste that in there. Um, I just sent it to her again, I will send it to everybody again for that. Um, that's where it's really gonna talk about what it takes to do this grant, and just a clarifying point on the grant. The grant total is eight million dollars for all rural districts, so when we apply for it, we're not gonna get eight million dollars and the project's not gonna cost eight million dollars. Um, we'd be applying for a portion of the grant that needs there, so, um, I've already been approached by three different groups. One probably has the strongest robust thing program, the ideal one I've just sent out and looking, we'll have to look at the other ones that, um, sort of sets it up, sets it up as a no payment plan. Until they recoup their costs and profit margin, then it's ours for the rest of that time. That's something that, um, I would like to have, cause I, I really don't want upfront costness with other items that we have, if we can do that, then turn around and recoup the benefit long-term. So, things to be thinking about that as we go through this process, questions you have? The meeting tomorrow is a great meeting to ask questions, we get the gentleman, uh, Lindstrom from the, uh, he was, this is what he does for certs and he's excited about helping schools. And further out in rural outside the X L area, he's excited about that, so, um, be prepared to ask questions that I haven't even thought of. Don't be afraid, cause I'm, this is not my realm of expertise, I just know long-term, it looks like a very good thing for our district if we have the upfront cost paid for. So. Next piece I believe we have is meet and confer. So just give you a little background here, I pulled this up that I, I shared with the, um, Teachers Union, so. Apologize, I don't have this to Peggy, but, um, this process actually begins at the principal level, where they bring concerns up, um, that they may have. And then if they aren't resolved in areas that take place in this, uh, they come to myself and the board, so, but. Things that are not able for, uh, meet and confer, so terms and conditions of employment. Are always addressed in the negotiation process and they're not part of this, this includes hours of employment, compensation, fringe payments. Uh, employer's personnel policies affecting working conditions employees. There's a lot of inherent merit managerial rights. That come up that aren't in there, um, that's functions of programs, employer, budget, utilizing your technology, organization, structure, it's a very limited scope that they're able to talk about with this. But it's always good to do this, I offer every year to have meet and confers, most years, not much comes up, I think coming off the pandemic. Items are gonna come up in the meet and confer for this, which is understandable, you know, we've been about two years separated a little bit, so it's, it's good, good that we actually have this, so. I'm looking at December sixth, time after four o'clock sometime, does that sound good once I get that set? All right. So I'll let, and do we still want to just have the teaching negotiation team, uh, do that meeting? Okay, we'll do the teacher negotiation, as long as I can have two members or a minimum. Okay. And then I listed in your, underneath the board, uh, conferences, um, who's registered for items. Don, you said you now can attend M R A, so we're gonna try to see if we can either find a replacement or, or get a refund on that. Um, M S B A, I have Dustin and Don, and then National School Board, I have Angie, Joel and Dustin. Um, I am attending M R A, plan attending M S B A, I'm not attending N S B A, Peggy will be attending the National School Boards, um, Association with you guys. She'll have the school credit card, so stick close to her. For that, um, there's a lot of good stuff for a lot of things, as you remember from the National School Board Conference, you've been to it, it's, it's one of the most broad-based conferences you'd go to from education to finance to a lot of different areas and that, so legislative action too. That's all I have for those areas, any questions?
Any questions for a superintendent? Lot of dates to keep in mind, lot of activities to take part in. If there's nothing, then we will move on. To item number eight, which is approval of project payments for the C T E and elementary. Uh, bill that came in this month now, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Motion to approve that, please.
Moved by Dustin. Second.
Motion by Dustin Stevens, seconded by Bruce Muse, to approve the payments for the building projects, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Any questions? Those payments are getting smaller every time, so we must be almost done. Peggy likes that, so.
We are finding, and Jamie can attest to that, is last year we didn't use the building at elementary up to its potential and we are now finding things as we are using it. That we probably would've found last year, but we just, so that's what a lot of it, what you're seeing, is we're just trying to.
More lunch tables, um, I think we've had a couple other items come through, it's, Jamie can probably list them off, cause she's been tracking it down with Peggy all the time.
Yeah, just more, um, conference room chairs, um, yeah, the lunch tables were a big one, clocks, we had some areas that didn't have clocks, you know, just minor things like that.
Okay, thanks, Jamie. Any other questions on that? So we have the motion on the floor to approve that, uh, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars, ninety-seven cents, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion passes. Item ten, approval of the teacher seniority list, which was enclosed in your packet. Motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll forgive you.
Item number nine, approve updated twenty-one, twenty-two activities assignments. A lot of coaches, mostly volunteers and things like that, that are being added to cover winter sports activities and things of that nature, motion to approve those additions.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Joel Bordewick, seconded by Dustin Stevens to approve the updated activities assignments. Any questions? Proceed to vote on that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion passes. Now, item number ten, teacher seniority list.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Joel Bordewick, seconded by Angie Clausen, to approve the teacher seniority list as presented. Any questions on any of those? Proceed to vote on that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion passes. Item eleven is approval of the E C F E and A B E seniority list.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Angie Clausen and seconded by Bruce Muse to approve the E C F E, A B E seniority list as presented. Any questions on any of those? Now we'll proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion passes. Item number twelve.
So move. Second.
Motion by Joel, was that Joel Lacan? Okay, Joel Lacan, and seconded by Bruce Muse to approve the administrator's seniority list. Any questions on that? Now we'll proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion passes. Approve early resignation agreements for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. That material was enclosed in your packet. Joel, can you turn your mic off?
Thank you. So enclosed is the details that we had before with December fifteenth and January fifteenth, is our dates for early resignation? Um, was there anything that the board saw that they, uh, chose to change from past years on this?
This hasn't decreased in necessity at all, right, we still very much have a need to.
The earlier we know, the easier it is for us to plan, A, recruit replacements, B, make adjustments to schedules for staff that may want to request transfers into spots that we say might be good fits. Or for us to transfer people in those spots to be, uh, really good fits according to licensure. As we go through this, the earlier we know, the better it is, if we wait till April, it's extremely difficult to hire, starting April one.
Well, then move approval.
Second.
Motion by Joel Bordewick, seconded by Angie Clausen to approve the early resignation agreements as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion passes. Item number fourteen is approval resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours. For polling in places will be open for voting for school elections not held on the day of statewide elections. Reason for this is in case we need a special election, it is not with the other state or county elections, we can't hold this. Motion to approve that resolution.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Angie Clausen, seconded by Bruce Muse to approve the resolution as presented, any questions on that?
Really, we are not holding an election at this time for anything, but we do this annually at this, so wherever something came up during legislative session, we found something we could host in August, we could host in April, we could host in May. This year, we, um, in twenty-twenty-two, you cannot due to the general election stuff, so just so you're aware, I wanna make sure that people think we're holding an election, we do this every November. Um, cause I do know districts maybe close to us that forgot to do this and they had to wait on their election for that.
Okay, this is resolution, so we'll do a roll call vote, start with Angie Clausen.
Yes.
Barb Jones.
Yes.
Joel Bordewick.
Yes.
Bruce Muse.
Yes.
Dustin Stevens.
Yes.
And Joel Lacan. And myself, yes, motion passes unanimous. Item fifteen is the approval of the resolution canvassing the return of votes for the school district election, which was held on November second. Motion to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Bruce Muse, seconded by Angie Clausen. Are we tired or what? Any questions on, uh, the votes?
Our voter turnout was very low this year, um, usually we'd be over a thousand and I think, um, from past history showing that if we hit that eight hundred and fifty-plus mark, we probably would've seen, uh, maybe a different result on the second, uh, question. But, um, not enough voters turned out this year. So, board will have to make some decisions later on, either next year or the year after, as we move forward.
I'd like to just make a comment to thank the community and those that did vote to renew the operating referendum, because that is very critical for us. And so, we really want to thank the community, uh, for the support on that and also the new building as well, um, again, just to reiterate that too.
And, uh, my, um, what I've heard too is that people, um, gave us the new building. Now, because of our economic situation since two thousand twenty in this country. People, it's so short, everything has gone up as far as gas, living expenses, energy. And the information I've gotten is that they don't want any more taxes. And that's one reason why many people voted against it.
Any other comments? If not, we have the motion to approve the, uh, canvassing returns, and that is a resolution also, so roll call vote, beginning with Angela.
Yes.
Barb.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Dustin.
Yes.
Joel. And myself, yes, motion passes unanimous. Item number sixteen is approve proceeding with the design and a bid of the HVAC system and powder coating of the paint room. Item number sixteen is approve proceeding with the design and bid of the HVAC system and powder coating of the paint room. And, uh, I believe we have more information that was sent out to us today by email.
So, um, when I sent out the email, and I can share with the media too, that we got the information report from ISG on doing this project. Um, and the committee can talk about this in a second, but what we're looking at just in general, um, one point eight million, and this includes a powder coat area. So when you look at what we explained on for the powder coat, it's about one point seven one eight without it, so actually we're about right on, we're a little bit high on that. Um, the committee did recommend that we put a couple, um, heat pumps in as backups, because where the locations are for redundancy, so we don't end up losing the whole gym area for heat. We have a backup source for that. Is that correct, Bruce? Okay, I make sure I said that right on the heat pump piece. You may want to get more information on that.
It, it, the heat pump and, uh, system is what moves the hot water. We're changing for the, um, to go from steam to hot water, and then the heat pump is what transfers it through the system. So if you have two, you're always switching, which we do in the various other buildings there. We have two running, but one is running, and then it switches off every time. The redundancy makes it so that our buildings and ground supervisor can sleep at night a lot more during the winter time, and a lot of things, because it takes care of itself then.
And then the other piece that, uh, they added into it was a heat recapture on the middle school, high school section where we have that, uh, which made the most sense there for energy efficiency and how we use that. So that drove a little bit of the price up on that, uh, actually, I was surprised, hit our target number, and then also includes the ionization for those two units in the middle school, um, wing also. For that, so we're getting heat recapture at this price for that, on that, those units, and then also the ionization on that. So, uh, one point eight million, about one, just under one point eight five million, about eight, uh, million total is what it, and it looks like being for that, so how would we pay for this? We currently have saved up over time, long-term facility maintenance of about eight hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. We dedicate eight hundred thousand dollars for that. That is none of our ongoing revenue. That's just straight reserves. Um, S R three funds, we'd move from our plan right now of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for what's called the one sixty code, which is items over five thousand. We revised the budget and moved that to nine hundred thousand, because we received one point one million in that, and then the other, uh, two hundred thousand dollars, we'd have their, um, plans and devices for that. I'll talk about some of that today and, and over the next year, so, um, and then the other a hundred and fifty thousand dollars will come from capital outlay. Keep the capital outlay, that leaves us about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in just reserves for emergencies or continue to build up for other projects. So as we start looking forward to, we'd be using those funds to build up for the locker room remodel, because it's old and outdated, and have to do a lot of work there, and then also the track replacement. Uh, someday in the future, which I feel the track replacement probably have to take place by summer of twenty-three, uh, because we have lost the base, and we have bad frost, we've actually had the, uh, track heat once where we had to cancel track meets. Last year it turned out okay for that, so we've done some patch repairs, but the, the base is pretty much, um, getting shot, and we're, we need to replace the whole base. And when we do that, we can think about the location where that goes in the future, but that's probably a twenty twenty-three project at the earliest for that. Um, so we're in a good shape with this. Um, we would not be doing this larger a project if it was not for the federal S R three funds. We'd be going piece by piece as we went around the building. This takes care of half that and leaves probably about another two million dollars of the, um, old middle school or the old high school area, um, from the old gym to the circle that need to be done in the future. And at that time, we'd change the whole system over to hot water heat. So that's something in the future. I can't say when that would be, but I'm, I'm looking at, uh, that's the next phase to this. Go ahead.
Okay, Bruce, correct me if I mess anything up here. So, um, for a long time, Wayne and Peggy have been saying, but we know we need to do roofs and HVAC someday, but we know we need to do roofs and HVAC someday, but we. So this is all money that we've seen in the budget forever and a day, um, so it's going to feel really good to get it done, and I think Wayne addressed the why now part of it. The funding is right. And we all know because of, uh, the pandemic, lead times and stuff went way out, it's retracting now. So it's a good window of time, um, and man, if you want to ever get super confused, look at the routings of our HVAC system. That's a pretty amazing, complex system. But the engineer that designed this took in every consideration, since we are looking at going to hot water instead of steam, so it can be super efficient. And would it be, make more sense to grab something now and do this later, and we questioned every corner, and this is a good plan. This is a very cost-effective plan. Actually, I'm with Wayne. I'm very surprised that it came in as close to our estimate, kind of was gulping, and when we saw the one point eight, we're like, sweet. Um, also looking at some controls questions too, so we might get some control things taken care of, so.
So our controls currently, it's a Honeywell control system, and they factored in, uh, some control costs of this. Um, we're going to open the bid up like we did the elementary, not to a single provider point. So if we have good pricing for that, we may switch over to a JOTS controller or another open system. Um, and also help keep Honeywell, uh, pencil sharp on this, if they want to maintain our, our business on that for the control system for the whole building. So we'll see how that comes in. So we're trying to leverage that for the long-term best use too. Very good.
I just want to say one more thing, and this is as much to everybody who might be watching here as to the members here, is that our time was running out. Because they do, don't make these anymore, the ones that we currently have. So in the last year, year and a half, they've been fixing it with used parts, refurbished parts, refurbished, um, board, control boards. And they cost as much as what a regular one would, it seems like, but, uh, it's just like anybody thing else that's refurbished. So time was running out, because how much longer are you going to be able to? We, we're even talking about, well, if we take them down, how much can we salvage out of it? And it doesn't, it isn't that much that can be salvaged out of these units, so, um, time was running out.
Any other comments? Then we would entertain a motion to proceed with design and bidding on the HVAC system and the power coating, the paint room.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Joel Bordewick, and seconded by Bruce Muse, to proceed with the design and bidding of the HVAC system and the powder coating. Any more questions? Proceed to vote on that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion passes. Item seventeen is discussion on teacher retention and recruitment, and there is material enclosed, and we will discuss those items.
So it's discussion, I, I mentioned before that we're going to come teach in Minnesota, that, uh, application, it's about, it's shockingly as simple as it comes, um, from the state of Minnesota. Um, for this, it's basically a application to be put into the order draw of, uh, lottery pick, basically. Um, if you're chosen right away, the first year you get access to the funds, which are broken out by student size, we get twenty-four thousand dollars on that, um, for recruitment of that, and it's upfront bonus money. If you do hire a teacher colored in that time, and then after they stay for four years, they get the matching amounts, like me, we're between twenty-five hundred dollars to four thousand for that. So maximum amount that we'd have would be twenty-four thousand for up to three hires in that category. Pretty straightforward than that. I did include our currently, we're E D A eight on this field right here. If you look at our positions that we are considered a shortage of in hiring with this. Um, we've tried to hire fourteen different positions in these categories over the last four years. In those categories you saw before, you see, I sent out a list in the email before about the number of applicants we've had for certain jobs that are fully qualified, and some weren't. Um, number of tier two teachers we have right now is six, number tier one teachers we have is, um, I believe six also at this time, or three, no, three at this time. Uh, moving through, we are looking for tier three, tier four. The good news is our tier six, our two teachers are moving towards our tier three licensures, which means they have a teacher license, but it's just not in the correct content area for across all the whole areas that they teach, so we move through that process for that. So we're having a much more difficult time to, um, hire teachers for that. So the first part is, um, looking at what we have there. I have the teacher color recruitment piece there. Um, another piece in the, um, and I think it might be in a different location. Where is that at? I did some digging, um, end up speaking to the superintendent from here on South Dakota, uh, Dr. Steinhoff, who ironically I interviewed for a teaching position when I was a principal, um, decades ago. I knew his father, so that means I'm getting a lot older, um, when he's a superintendent, and I interviewed for a teaching position, uh, back when I was a principal. So what, uh, two things in here. First thing I just want to show you is, this is, uh, something they happened to send to me and I asked for after we talked a little bit. Um, they do an interesting thing with their substitutes. They do a reward, um, basis on the number of, uh, times you sub in a month. And so it becomes additional pay if you have a sub that subs quite a bit, and so it incentivizes that instead of you, okay, what's the most, like, each district? Hey, I do, uh, one through, on theirs is four days, it's one twenty, ours current pay is one fifty, but then five, it goes, more than five, it goes up per day, all the way through. Someone's there fifteen days in a month, that's a lot. And so they really reward them for coming to, uh, substitute teach more days, so I just thought that's something that, um, uh, Peggy and I talked about as a possibility. We think that'd be very, um, rewarding to some of our, uh, subs, and maybe increase some of our subs that are here, some days here, maybe in a different district, encourage them to come to us. A little bit more off, especially if you're a day or two away, and oh, if I go there, I get an extra fifty bucks, because I'm over the limit now for that month. Um, it's by month, uh, to encourage that. So I just thought I'd bring that up. Now, the retirement, um, of professional staff, theirs is a, for teachers, for this piece here. Um, they do have something else that's a little bit different, but I'd like to have a, if Peggy and I talked a little bit, and we'd really like to have a uniform program for all staff, because all staff are valuable, and what we're looking at is, we're having a tough time hiring all staff. When we look at going down here a little bit further, they have a longevity piece in there for some retirement stuff, but if we, piece I'm really looking at is, when you look at the years of service, you go to the new policy effective July one, two thousand sixteen. Building a structure similar to this, where, um, my vision for this is that we'd reward, um, staff that have been in our district for five years or ten years, where we start the structure on this. At the fall in service, we'd reward them, it'd be in their payroll, okay? But have the board members reward our staff in front of all other staff, saying, hey, come on up, here's our five-year teachers, shake their hands, and it might be a mock checker or something like that, that they're actually receiving this on their next payroll. As we go through this process here, you're looking at the, the numbers here, and it has nothing to do with negotiation salary schedule, because it's all employees across the board. Might have a little bit prorating by number of hours, things like that, but you really get to recognize what takes place there. So I did a draft run on this, on our teaching staff, and then sort of used our, uh, current, um, other staff. The interesting piece with this, it's about eighty-one thousand dollars, give or take, we get a little bit deeper by when we cite the numbers and the number of years for a first year. Then everybody's caught up. Oh, my twenty-year, twenty-five, all those people that have earned it already, and you don't get to double up and get a twenty, fifteen, you know, and get a five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, you don't get all that, you just, whatever year you're at. Get that, so the first year you do this is the most expensive. All right, then after that, it drops down, because now it's only as people earn it with this. It's a great retention tool. They've had a lot of success with this. Um, they make a very big deal of it, and they actually have a banquet and do a bunch of honors. I was thinking for us, have everybody recognized in the fall at staff in service. Everybody's there, board members come in and actually do this, because it's all our employees that you're dealing with. It's not the superintendent, it's not the principals, it's the board member saying, you know, we're choosing to this. Other thing is it's in policy, it's across all staff. So it's really, it's something the board chooses to do, not a negotiable item that says it changes for each group. Okay? The good news is this, Peggy and I have been emailing with the state, um, on S R three, we can actually use our S R three funds for retention and recruitment. So the first year startup cost, we can use our federal funds for. And then, but what I like to do is only use the federal funds for the extra, because to make this work well, long-term, it needs to be built into our budget. That's the line item, so it's not hit or miss. It becomes a long-term piece that we do, whether we get bigger, we get smaller as a district, doesn't matter, it's what we do for retention and honoring our employees. So we really want to build that into our system as a whole for that. Anything you want to add to that, Peggy? So do I have all this, is this exactly what we do? No, this is just, when you read it, it's an idea of how to do it. Because, you know, when I talk about this retention stuff, you're thinking, well, I found a district that's currently doing it. It's something we could look at, read, get some ideas, um, but also it does not be done urgently right now, but I think through the spring, before spring hits, we should be able to tell our employees whether we're doing this or not. Makes sense? Questions, concerns on this?
A question to help make a good decision on it is, that looks like a very nice plan, and of course, to think of some dollar figures, but also, um, rather than just looking at the sticker shock of what it might cost, maybe, um, ask here on, and maybe already have liked to quantify the amount of employees that they feel maybe stay or have a family and like to stay. Nice to have some of that information. It must be working for them if they're continuing to do it, and this is their fifth year, so that's a good thing.
Uh, this is fifth year in version two. Um, they actually had that before and, and some other areas there. Um, I did talk to, um, uh, Dr. Neville Sec. Um, um, had been a year or so ago about what they'd done there. They've seen an improvement. I'll get the numbers on that. I'll ask, uh, Dr. Steinhoff about that and see what their changes have been.
Sure. Nice boost for morale, too, especially with a banquet.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we can do the banquet piece, because it's very difficult for us sometimes pay for those things with the way that Minnesota's restructured. We've got different states. But, um, how we do that, but I think there's something we can do definitely that, at, at our fall in service, as we do some things, uh, to move that forward, and we do provide meals at fall in service, um, at different times for different things, so there might be something we can tie together there. Okay. Um, I had something else in that one. Second. Okay, uh, recruitment currently right now, we're looking at possibly up to six more job fairs. Currently, we've been doing one and then doing a lot of online. Um, we find the online marketing does a little bit, um, but we're probably going to put a higher touch. This is similar to, it's, it's hard to recruit right here and throughout southwest Minnesota as it was twenty years ago, uh, in western South Dakota on the reservation. Okay, um, looking at what we do there. So current ones, we currently have on, on the horizon are Fargo, Two Falls, Minneapolis, we're looking at you and I, the one at Iowa, um, State, um, even Black Hill State. Um, Black Hill State actually draws a lot of, uh, students from across Midwest, and then looking for them to move further east after they've been in the western South Dakota. Um, for that, we had great luck out there before, um, looking at different things at high touch there. Um, then I talked again about the Minnesota Department of Education, Come Teach in Minnesota program. This is a no-risk program for us, because they're going to pay for the bonuses. Our thing is we just have to sign up for it. If we recruit a teacher of color from out of state to bring them into our state to teach in their tier three or tier four, we can offer bonuses for that on that piece as recruit teachers. So, um, we're just trying to think ahead on what we're, what we're able to do and what we're trying to do there.
So you said some S R funds can be used for retention and recruitment?
Yep, so we'll be using, um, and I'll talk about this in Puerto Rico, when we connect, we got permission that says we can, uh, guidelines say we can use it for recruitment of teachers, so like this year, when we expand those resources for that. And we know we'll have some hotel costs and some most, just local area travel, which is not unrealistic, and then some mileage costs that we'll probably write off directly towards our S R three as we go through the process. Um, we've always have some, always have some funds in there, but this will be probably more than we spent in, in quite a while to see how that goes with it.
So if we are in Fargo or Spearfish or wherever, and we attract a student that just is graduating, but willing to come to Wyndham, but they also have a local offer, the cost of moving might be a, um, a deal breaker? Is that something we can use S R funds for as helping in that way?
Only if it's written into our plan. Only if it's written to our application, that we're working on revising that, so.
That's a good point, you know, to read, um, uh, moving expense into our plan. Because you notice that we left two hundred thousand dollars on the table of our one point one million for the HVAC system, because I could not use capital funds for recruitment retention or other items. That's, we left two hundred thousand dollars available for other things that may pop up, including recruiting attention, so that's a good idea. I'm glad you brought that up, because I had not thought of using that directly for, um, moving allowance. Thought of a lot of other things, but not.
But Wayne, Wayne, you did though, when you offered.
But Wayne, Wayne, you did though, when you offered the teacher. You offered them, move them.
Yep, yeah, I did that, but that wasn't through S R funds though. That was just out of our general fund. So yeah, so we, I can. We, we actually have the board and has the right to say, we can do a, a stipend for moving. We can do a, a bonus, signature bonus, anything like that. There's something that says we can't do that. Okay? That's part of the reason why if we have to start doing that, it's very good that we have retention bonuses for our, our retention um, amounts for our current staff. So it's just not treating our staff who are coming to our district with money. It's saying, no, thank you for being here and staying this long. Over time, we're gonna continue to give you funds. With this. It's a good way to thank that, that our current staff with that. So that's a, that's a good one. I hadn't thought about putting that into the S R funds. Peggy's got it written down. It's gonna go in the application. Other questions or comments or ideas that we might not have thought of as we move forward with this?
I like how you brought up expanding into Iowa, Black Hill State. Um, Barb mentioned that last, or at the last meeting to expanding the area. Of recruitment and I think that's important. Maybe go into area, go into areas that. Where students might assimilate a lot with Wyndham or a small town or this area as well. And uh, so yeah, maybe some of the Midwest area, Omaha. Yeah, that's a good idea.
And I like the piece before this, when you were talking about retention, you know, thanking our employees for their longevity. I mean, it does make a difference to not have to rehire for positions and. I want us, even within negotiations, I know that's always that they'd like to put a longevity piece in there and I think by us. Making it on policy versus in contract, I'd like the, to show our appreciation.
So if you get asked about retention, it's retention of all employees. Next piece I have, um, so we'll continue working on that in discussion piece here. As we forward. This next one is an action item we've worked as the timelines get very tight and that's about recruiting in Puerto Rico. With that, so what you're gonna see inside here with our, our diverse population, I added some more information here about where this is going and, and we be. The state has made our uh, parents more self-reports. We're not quite getting all the self-reports on this, but even with our parents self-reporting last year. We saw another three percent increase in our minority population to thirty five point four nine percent. And we know this year that's uh, when we get official numbers later, it's gonna be larger again with that. And the one skewing piece on this is early childhood. Um, early childhood only counts early child special education. So you're looking at those twenty nine students that are minor. Uh, minority students, but our total preschool, which is fee-based or scholarship-based is a much larger percentage than that at that point there too. So. Some of these numbers are a little bit skewed to the downward side in all honesty with this. So. Our key to this is we want to find quality applicants. Bilingual is great. Um, that's gonna help us. Um, teachers of color that actually are more representative of our student population with this. Currently, right now, we have one teacher of color in their entire district. Teaching uh, in the high school right now. So when we look at this. Wyndham isn't gonna go backwards. And what's taking place in our diversity that's taking here. We can wait and hope it changes. Wait and work on long-term plan, which I think we need to do as we grow our own teachers for future, which we've been very lucky. You look at a lot of teachers inside the Wyndham School District right now, they're alumni of Wyndham. We have a lot of good alumni in Wyndham, um, teaching here. And we've actually hired quite a few teachers locally from Jackson and here in Lake, um, Mount Lake. A lot of the areas here. So we're, we're recruiting our area pretty well. Um, for that, which gives like uh, Dustin said, people that understand our community and our sense of our community that takes place there. So this is quite, a lot of the stuff is from information from the last meeting. I also added more information after I met with Abraham from High Life. And the advantage is there for some of the workforce support that he can provide for that access through offices, free of charge. Uh, connections to take place within the universities to recruit from in those areas. The key is we would not recruit personally in High Life unless our advertising or online recruiting goes, starts well. Through uh, using Zoom in those areas for that, cause as we start to see that work, then we would be looking at saying, okay, we're gonna down to an interview sets. For a day or two and then also visit all four universities that are, have teacher ed programs. Um, Puerto Rico at this time, their education system, uh, due to funding, the hurricane and everything else and some serious fraud that took place. Basically embezzlement. They're struggling. So Minnesota in our education system is highly ranked. High area choice for educators. We have an opportunity. To explore. Now how we do that? You know, if you look at what our teacher of color grant, you're talking maybe three teachers we could possibly recruit from here or other places. If we received, uh, we received two teachers out of Puerto Rico, I'd be very happy. We may go all for. But realistically, then I looked at the cost and this is okay, this is a pretty chunk, good chunk of change. As you look at these numbers and you see my step process here. Step one is engage attorneys to meet Puerto Rico laws to directly advertise in Puerto Rico. And costs there and, and these are probably slightly inflated, because the attorney out per hour rate is cheaper than our attorney that we currently have, what we use in the school district by quite a bit. Targeted data digitally marketing into Puerto Rico. This is something that um, Abraham from High Life, the recruiter that's in Puerto Rico says. This is how you have to get your start. If you don't do this there, you will not get started, cause you can't just show up. You can't just advertise paper, put billboards up and hope to get applicants. Won't happen. It's through Facebook and I have a second Facebook page in Spanish that's just basically sitting in uh, on the uh, advertising to Puerto Rico. And targeting that whole thing, paying for ads through Facebook to target that area with that. And if we start interest, you start preliminary interviews through Zoom, interest is high enough to actually do onsite interviews. Then you move forward with that process. We sort of book a window and say, this is when we'd like to do it. So we gotta be about a month ahead of that on our Zoom interviews. To set that up. It's probably a minimum three day trip. In country, in, in Puerto Rico, I'm ensuring in country, it's in uh, territory. With that, we're two days or one days for all day long interviews and then visiting those university systems to recruit. To this area. Hire and set transition plans for new teachers, as you just mentioned, using S R funds for possible transition people back. We can use S R funds. To start and try this process. So we're not pulling from anything in our educational system funding. We use the federal S R funds to take that off the table for a cost issue. For that. We're looking probably a two-year trial run on this. Cause that's the two years we have for the S R funds.
So I'm looking at that, yes. The nineteen oh five three sixty, is that the, to go? Do it, or is that what it would cost to get one teacher here?
My estimate is that there'd be an extra two thousand dollars set aside for transition cost of employees and some of that. Um, I had not figured out what that, I just threw it in there and assumed maybe we could do. I didn't even think movement. I wasn't sure what it was. I just figured we could write something into that grant and they'd be willing to do that as long as we're recruiting. And retain teachers that meets the grant like guidelines. That transition cost is a line holder for what that would be. Would it be airfare, moving expense? I don't know. Signing bonus and they can choose how to do that. But they wouldn't probably need to have their teacher of color. We already ha, if we get the grant the first year, we'd have those funds available for that bonus. For signing.
And then, and I'm maybe way ahead of the cart here, but do we know what the temperature there is? Is there? The teachers coming out of those programs there, do they have a desire to come into the continental U S or they?
Actually, I did a little, did a little research in um, east coast schools, north of New Jersey into Connecticut have been trying and have been successful recruiting that area. For that. And so you can go online, you can start looking for articles with that and, and targeting that and bringing back, um, especially in areas where they have high yield population. Um, bringing back bilingual um, teachers for that. Would we be the first ones trying this that I'm aware of in the Midwest? That I'm aware of. There might be somebody else is doing this in different areas too, so.
Okay, cause I'm curious, cause I can imagine like eighty wins on this deal connecting, we know we have more um, students that originated. Either in Puerto Rico with Puerto Rico families and have teachers that talk their culture and their language. Win. Couple languages, win. Now if we also have um, a desire, if there's a contingent of really good teachers there that are looking for an opportunity outside of Puerto Rico. Win, you know, cause it's a very competitive market. And so if we're in a market where we have a corner on the competition. Man, that'd be another huge opportunity. I think this is a really, 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 really good idea. I'm glad you're pursuing it.
They're, when looking at salary structure, the closest ones that pay this is about seventy five percent of our pay schedule at max, as low as forty percent of our pay schedule. For that. So, and the benefits aren't as good and their pension plan is pulling apart down there. So opportunity, if you're looking for an opportunity for a person to take your family. Be an educator. Make a living. In a small town core values. Know that you're moving into a place that has people from your co, from your communities and culture in your island there. This is one of those opportunities that we can actually sell that. As uh, Abraham told me, he goes in your advertising. You, uh, let's see. Uh, what can we offer for their future? How is that they're being part of our community and the residents that you have currently there, how can they see that as part of their future? If we did not have our current connection, what High Life is doing and currently bringing people in, being successful in cold weather, things like that. And having those conversations that we can relate people to. And he's offering people and being prepared to help us do this, cause he thinks this is a great opportunity for um, people of Puerto Rico. For this, to be part of our community and bring in an educated population too with this, so. Concerns?
Yes, I do have concerns. If we had a teacher come, one, that would be like, and then they decided they didn't like it here after a year or two. That's a lot of money to add to the total cost of, of one or two teachers. That would be the one concern. Second concern is. It looks like special treatment, maybe a little bit in the eyes of some, and that could be treaded into with caution. Um, I really like the idea of adding qualified. New applicants into the field. Anybody that's working hard and qualified, that's really wonderful. For that all the way. And the second perceptive thing would be, if this would be catering to High Life instead of something different. And I really like that we could work with uh, businesses in our community, like with the C T E center. That's really wonderful thing. But I tread forward with caution on uh, on uh, the perception of that. And are there special funds where we could go to say India or something? India, India educates a lot of engineers and physicians and professionals that way. Reach into other territories like that. So um. It's an, it is a neat idea. It's really been researched, I see, a lot at length. Cautiously proceed right now. I might even entertain using some of those, some monies to maybe expand our current recruiting area farther out. But um. It's a neat idea and it's always nice to help and diversify what we have, um, if that's what our population is, uh, like Joel mentioned. And uh. Fit our needs and kind of to see if the natural course would take care of that or if something like this would be necessary to move forward with that.
Another idea I had, if you're looking, if you're looking at that to be more representative, you know, and then, cause part of this, we need more representative of our community and regardless of where they work, we can say High Life, we can say Toro, we can say. Um, those areas, um, are you open to recruiting El Paso, Texas and the universities, T C U and those areas down there and the educational thing and. Um, there's um, uh, great universities that have a highest Hispanic population for teachers in southern California and Arizona. And some of those areas that we could also do that too. Um, some of those are immigrants into the country. They're getting their teaching license after coming to the country. I mean. What I'm trying to do is figure out how we can, for a segment of population that's gonna grow, we know that. Um, within our population, um, whether they're from uh, Mexico or uh, South America or southern United States. Our teaching demographics and our, and our staff demographics uh, does not meet our current student demographic that's taking place. And um, you can look at what Richard So is, is when you, when your teachers look like your students and we have that high expectation across the board for everybody. Um, and then there's assimilation and the correlation to culture and language that comes there, you can see greater results. So that, that's what I'm looking for. And then the fact is that we have a teacher shortage. And we just can't continue to go and say, hey, we need ten chemistry teachers in southwest Minnesota and three graduated. I mean, that, that's, that's where we're at. And if you want to say we recruit India, that'd be great. Uh, but the um, currently right now, um, I don't think we have more than. One Indian student in the past three years that I'm aware of. We've had some from Vietnam, maybe Malaysia and a couple other places here or there, but um, we may, no, we may have three, four right now.
We had a family that lives here from India, um, but a lot of their students are older, but we do have one currently.
Yep.
That has Indian heritage, we'll say.
So when we look at that, says I'm not opposed to recruiting anywhere that allows us to do that. The advantage was that um, there, even though that looks expensive, it's still gonna be. Cost sales where we have the connection in order to recruit out of and help with, help with that. With um, Abraham's support. The company there of High Life, so. Cause they're, they're basically saying free of charge. When you're there, what you need and he's free of charge his time, helping us connect everything. Just making sure, because he wants to make a better uh, community for all people that move here.
That is a, that is nice to hear. It's nice to work with our businesses on, on things. It's nice to hear.
I, I have a concern about, how about um? The educational requirements to get a teaching degree in Puerto Rico? Is it very similar to here?
Yep, so um, I had Heather Van Dyke who used to work for Pelsby. Uh, works with our licensing. She contacted them and says a US university or university in Puerto Rico. Will account for the same transition with this that we have uh, coming to Minnesota as if it's coming from um, the foreign area of South Dakota. Okay? Minnesota period makes it very difficult for licensing teachers regardless where you're from. So I'm not that they have a US degree or a degree from Puerto Rico University. They qualify for a license in Minnesota, whether it be a tier two or tier three or tier four, depends on that transition, just like when we get somebody from South Dakota or Iowa. And we have the same headaches with that. The easiest license to get in Minnesota. Okay, from out of state is actually the superintendent license. It is the easiest license you can get crossing over. I said that out loud. That is true. That's how you ended up with me. It was easy.
And then um, when we, if we talk about like other countries to recruit from, there is quite, there would be a substantial difference between bringing someone in from Puerto Rico versus. Uh, a true foreign country, cause we don't need a visa for someone from Puerto Rico, correct?
Correct. So they're US citizens. That's the main reason my High Life's doing, the US citizens, um, they're a US territory. Uh, start teaching English after third grade. Their educators are in bilingual, English and Spanish for that when they come out the teaching degree. So that. Makes a huge difference right there for us and overall moving forward.
And your, the proposal includes you interviewing someone, right? Or someone that we know and trust from our school district. Being part of this process.
We do the same interview process we've done before, which maybe, okay, Zoom, I'm gonna put them in front of our principal and their fellow teachers. Cause that's what we do with our teachers. We do as a team. Um, with that, the principal and the teachers run that interview uh, for that. To try to do a pre-interview. We'd be, put more of our pre-interview system in. To make sure we have enough qualified people we want to bring back for an in-person interview before we travel to Puerto Rico. And then when we're in Puerto Rico doing the in-person interview and answering those questions, we'd probably take a um, one of our translators. And at least one administrator and maybe somebody else for that. It may just be one administrator and translator. As we look at that, I'd set a maximum of three people. Depends which we're, depends what we're recruiting for on that. Going down uh, to Puerto Rico for that. So then we could then visit all the universities. That we wanted to visit also, cause that'd be a two-step pull, cause we want to make that present in person. That's what other districts have done from the east coast. To try to build that pipeline long-term if they can, cause it might be one or two. Joel, you're shaking your head with some doubts. What's your doubts?
When we vote, I'll tell you.
Uh, the question would be I'd have was background checks, kind of like when we do background checks. Uh, the question would be I'd have was background checks, kind of like when we do background checks here in Minnesota. And inland healthcare is, it's very extensive. It goes to Minnesota, fingerprints, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep. They have to still provide the same licensing requirements in Minnesota, which they do a fingerprint card to go through the whole process with that, um, which ends up being the same background check within that. And then we also have, I think it's called Orange Tree. Is that correct? So our background check that we do supplemental to that. I think it's Orange Tree. We do our own background check on top of the Pelsby licensing board for the background check. They have to submit a fingerprint card to get their teaching license. And we also do a background check on all hires. So they get checked twice.
Another question, um, back up to Worthington School District, just speaking of demographic changes, about nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety, when their packing house expanded a lot over there. Do we know if their staff structure has changed to meet or does Worthington do recruiting into different areas? Maybe call and find out.
Well, actually Worthington, I can tell you a lot about Worthington. Worthington has attempted some of that, uh, within the Hispanic community, but what they found is that, um, for them right now, because it's so diverse, they have sixty-some languages spoken within the community of Worthington and in their school system. Uh, there is no majority. Okay? There is no one ethnic or racial background that is a majority in there. They're that diverse in their school district. They have actually partnered and they, with the, uh, University of, uh, Southwest State University and Midwest to actually work through, um, grow their own to a degree. We've attempted that. Problem is, is for us to grow our own, we aren't quite there at that size and that capacity to run that number of classes or to make that feasible for it. So they're actually currently doing that internally because their mass is so much larger than ours. Do I foresee us being able to do that in the future? Actually, yes. That is where I'd like to be in about five or six years, that we'd actually have a segment of, um, our own students or populations moved here that we're putting through the first two years of, um, um, schooling through a, uh, grant process that's out there. Um, they've used Blandon and they use the McKnight Foundation for some of that. And they're looking at Southwest State University is actually doing an endowment. Hopefully it ends up taking care of that to increase the diversity within Southwest Minnesota and teaching to match the current diversity of Southwest Minnesota. Um, I'd like to be part of that. We don't have enough critical mass to make that happen to have an onsite here. But that's coming. That's sort of phase two of our recruiting in the long term. You're, you're ahead of me on that one, but we're not their critical mass to be able to provide that number.
So eventually the natural course of it will fill the void.
I think two things will take care of that. We'll have early efforts. Hopefully shows that this is a place for, uh, diverse students, diverse teachers, diverse all staff. Okay? Everyone. Then as we build that, as we start seeing this take place and we see teachers in those roles, we start growing our own teachers within that structure too long-term. Um, because now you have those role models. You have those people for that. And I, I see that we may have a, a, a pipeline from, uh, maybe from different areas in the country, maybe Puerto Rico. And that may dwindle as we grow our own over time, because that's where the investment goes over time as we make that transition. So, I mean, that, that's where I foresee it going, yes.
I know that you work hard and you go to these job recruitment fairs, don't you, Wayne? Like in South Dakota's.
Yeah, I've gone, yep. I've been to Minneapolis, went to, yep, in different areas, yep, all over.
So you do that already?
We, we have not done a lot of them the last five years. Um, we've been so reliant on our internet stuff and it's just not pulling people in. I mean, our principals can basically attest that, uh, uh, our advertising through the internet and where we thought we were doing really well, uh, K-12 job spots and some other ones, um, that has really started to dwindle. Um, on that, the number.
I guess the one thing about the comment about this is, you know, the expense of going to Puerto Rico and that and that it's for recruitment and that, and that kind of making it a special situation. I think something like that was what we talked about, but we've done that for how many hires already here? That, you know, that we have a bonus or we have a, a start because of certain skills that they're at a different level than, uh, introduction in, in all across the school system. So, um, we do special things to keep the school running.
Hiring off schedule, I think is what you're referring to, right? Extra years of experience off schedule, that is not also very popular either at times when, uh, someone comes in with same years of experience, but in order to land them because of where their salary structure is, we give them a few more years of experience and we, then we're in that conversation and negotiations about how we make this equitable and fair and, and work that whole process. I don't know how to make that all fair, but I am really concerned about not having quality teachers in front of our kids. And I'm, I'm really getting more and more nervous about being able to recruit highly qualified teachers, quality individuals, because it is getting short. And that's just not here. That's everywhere. And, um, my job is to put, put the best product in front of our students. We have the best product come out of our system.
One thing that I, could I mention one item? We, Ms. Frank and I talked, we have a really high success rate when we have student teachers. And, um, anything we can do that the board could do to encourage relationships with universities to have student teachers in Wyndham always seems to be a very positive thing for us. Because we get a lot of great stu- teachers. We can mold them in the Wyndham way and then they want to come back and they want to teach in our school district because they've been trained that way already. So, that's one thing to keep in mind as well as those, you know, you've mentioned some of the university partnerships. We've had a very good success rate with those. But are other things needed as well? Yes. Uh, but that's one thing that I want to, that hasn't been brought up, that I think if there's anything you could do to help in that regard as well, that's a very positive thing. We're a little bit, you know, we're an hour away from the closest university that would bring student teachers our way too. We have to keep that in mind. New Ulm, um, or Martin Luther in New Ulm had a number of student teachers for a while there. We didn't have a great success rate there, but with Marshall and with Mankato, we tend to have a very good success rate with teachers that are placed in our buildings that want to come then and teach full-time in our district, so.
That's a good point to bring up. Is there a way we can expand that or invite more student teachers? That's a good idea.
Way to house them and stipend them. The two things you need to do, you need to house them and stipend them. Because the stipend on that helps cover their expenses for gas or anything else that they have with us. Um, student teaching is truly an unpaid, um, internship. And actually they're paying for the privilege of student teaching in your school. So a lot of them do not want to travel very far because it's just added expenses. No different than when I was. I wanted to be in Aberdeen because I could live in the apartment I'm already paying for, not to get a second apartment for those twelve to eighteen weeks for that. Those are two major roadblocks when we do that is pay them a stipend, find housing. I got some suggestions on the housing piece.
With our geographic area too, I mean, that's the biggest pieces. If you've got some housing or if somebody has a connection to Wyndham, they come and it's easy. They've got somewhere to stay. But being that we're an hour away from Mankato, hour and, or a little over an hour from Marshall, that's the, the biggest thing we hear is people are driving forty-five minutes, hour, and in the winter, that's a real deterrent, so.
Any other comments?
I'm just thinking, once upon a time, there was, uh, my niece came to the plant and she walked by the lab and she saw there was lady scientists in the lab and she said, I never thought about that, but I could be a scientist. She'd never equated her being female with scientist. And I think if we have a Puerto Rican teacher and we have a lot of Puerto Rican students, they might go, hmm, um, maybe I could be a teacher here. And then also, um, I think we kind of maybe crack the window a little bit. And people are like, okay, that's a district that allows teachers of color in. And it's a safe place for teachers of color to come work in. So I think if we're very, very intentional and try very hard to make it happen, um, because I like what you're going to, how can this naturally happen? How can we get there through kind of just naturally? I think that first step has to be very intentional. Um, because we might be sending out the wrong signal if we don't have any, uh, diversity.
Anything else? Would you entertain a motion to approve the recruitment of teachers from Puerto Rico?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Joel Bordelick, second by Angela Clausen, to start the recruitment process for teachers from Puerto Rico. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll proceed to vote. I think we'll do this on my roll call vote. Start with Angela.
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Myself. Oh, we'll go Joel first.
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dustin?
No.
Joe?
No.
And myself, yes. Motion passes five, two. Item nineteen is the annual review of a policy, four nineteen, which is our tobacco-free policy. That was in your packet.
Required annual review, no changes to the policy. Any questions or comments from what's in the packet? I could read it to you, the entire policy.
That's just for review. It doesn't need any action on that. And the same then on item twenty, which is the annual review of policy four twenty-one, gifts to employees. Any questions on that? I don't think there were any changes to that policy either. Okay. Other items, we have the OSHA situation with the COVID and the mandates and all that stuff. And a lot of things changing by the minute.
Yep. So as you notice right now, currently the OSHA policies being sued, uh, are being challenged in court. There's been a stay, but realistically we're going to continue to move forward in our process. So we meet timelines. If it does not get thrown out, if it does get thrown out, we've spent some time and some effort on this. Um, Peggy, do you have that policy to show up? Uh, we have received a draft policy that we can start plugging things in. Things that we're going to have to put in place. HR over here knows this from Toro because she's doing the same thing. If you're over a hundred employees, um, we're required to have this. We are well over a hundred employees and I got some good news for you. Employees, we're trying to figure out if game officials be considered that, our contractors, um, our game workers, um, on this. Our volunteers and how that will be looked at within this because they're serving students in that. So we'll have to be looking at that also. Um, contracted employees such as bus drivers should be taken care of by their employer with that. And I do want to remind each and every one of you that, um, as board members, you're paid and considered employees. Could do the payment stipend. So with that, um, this covers a lot more than what we're seeing. We're waiting for some clarification from MSBA to see if any of those groups are excluded. Um, right now, looking at the OSHA stuff, I'm guessing not. If you're in contact within that, you are not going to be excluded from this. So as I talk about these different things, it also applies to the board members. Okay? Um, there is December fifth is when all unvaccinated workers must start wearing masks. January fourth is where unvaccinated workers or employees have to, um, wear masks and start the weekly testing process for that. So I realize this is, that's why I brought that last piece up, okay? Um, I'm making a smile, um, with this, but that's just what it's reading right now after being part of this. We have to really work about the employee testing process because it's not doing a home test yourself and then saying nobody's negative. It actually is going to be watched by an employee or has to be taking, uh, place at a clinic, uh, on that process with this. A couple of things with getting the vaccination, those who have not, or first those who have, what they report to us is very specific and how they have to report that to us for proof of vaccination. It's considered a medical record for HIPAA violations, et cetera, for that. So we have to keep that very confidential within that. But the irony is, is those that are wearing masks may be the ones that are most identified as that. But honestly, right now, I know we probably have some staff members that are currently wearing masks in our school system that are vaccinated by their choice. So it won't be as easy as you think with that whole process there. The next thing is, is, um, as we go to employee testing, we have to work through the religious exemption process and how this will work. So we work with MSB on that. So we have some guidelines to make those decisions on that. Once again, the dates are December fifth for masking, sixth, sorry, yep, because that's the fifth is a Sunday, right? It's sixth, Monday. December sixth and then January fourth for the testing on that. So now there is one little caveat on that. If you're only working once every seven days, greater than seven days, you just have to provide a test within seven days prior to coming to work. So if we have a board meeting on the fourteenth of January, I'm just pulling this when we were, eighteenth of January, you'd have to have a test saying they're negative prior to the eleventh or the eighteenth in that range, okay? She's living it. We're living it, um, with this too, okay? With this process, so. But there is one thing that we really need to talk about. I do not want to have anybody become unemployed because of this policy. So I've done a little digging on this. Um, there's three, three ways this works here, um, with this, okay? Employees refuse, they can, they come back to work, um, get vaccinated, do mask and take the test. Three, going to wait for the OSHA rules to change. I'm looking at whether or not for that third piece there that they're going to wait, that they'd actually be put on unpaid leave pending their choice to come back as one, get vaccinated, two, come back masked and test, or three, for OSHA rules to change. The idea being that we did not terminate Joel, okay? Or Dustin, or Joel, or Wayne, or whoever it's going to be on that whole process. We didn't terminate them as much said, okay, you've made a decision and choice and I'm assuming they didn't qualify for a religious exemption process. That then was saying, your job is here and available to come back to, but we will not be doing pay and benefits during that time if that's your conviction.
And I don't believe they can collect unemployment during that time because there is work available for them.
Now, is, is this a mandate?
This is an OSHA requirement.
But is it a mandate?
It's being, um.
Is that a law, is it?
No, it's a, it's a temporary. It's called like an ETS.
Yeah, well, if it isn't a law and it's not a mandate, they can't force it.
Yes, they can.
No, they can't.
They can, they, they have to, we can get fined if we don't comply.
Fine then, because.
That's a lot of money, Joe. It's like a hundred.
The thing is, we can't, we can't back up on this. We have to be strong on this and not let us be followers. We have to take the position that we're not going to let people bu- uh, bust us around or, or direct us as far as sheep. We're not sheep. I don't have a vaccine. I'm not going to ever take it.
I get where you're going and I completely understand, but there are requirements that we do have to follow. I mean, I'm living it. I sat on a two-hour conference call today regarding this. And there is like very hefty fines that we could get charged per person if they are not following this mandate.
If I may, I think we're all gonna, opinion is all bound and, uh, strong opinions, right, Joe? Very strong opinions will abound. So where we stand as a board isn't our opinion, what are we gonna do? So we can't really say our opinion matters in this, but what we do as a school district does. So if some, if we have a teacher that feels that way, we have to know what our options are and what we can do. Because, right, you're right, Joe. People will have the same response as you. And I don't think the way you feel really is what's super duper important right now. I think making sure that we can address how people feel the same way as you, because there's a lot of them, right? Would you say there's a lot, Joe?
I, see, the thing is.
We just need to know how we can provide the best logical response.
But I think as a board, we have to make a decision not to be sheep, not to be, uh, is that a mandate?
Let's make a, let's make a.
Is that a mandate or a law?
A plan then, instead of just calling a sheep, let's make a plan. What's a plan?
If we follow, if we follow the, is that a mandate or a law? If we follow that, that's important.
Give me a second, Joel, on that. So OSHA sets safety requirements and we're in OSHA state also. Okay, we have our own state OSHA and it works through the whole process this. So the safety and health of employees within this, and within our working environment, okay? OSHA has the right, okay, to fine us for non-compliance. And non-compliance can be from they showing up to somebody just reporting us. So somebody says, hey, you are not doing what you're supposed to be doing, makes a phone call, OSHA shows up. I don't have the exact number, but fines are up to thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars per violation.
It can go up to over a hundred thousand dollars per violation if they cite you for a will. It can go up to over a hundred thousand dollars per violation if they cite you for a willful violation.
So, so, just, I want, I want you to do the math on this, so every violation we have is thirteen thousand nine hundred, and then if we fail to correct that violation, it's another thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars per violation. And then if it's a willful refusal for each violation, it's one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, I get that, but the thing is, um, i- isn't this constitutional?
Right now, it's being challenged in court, whether it's going to be okay or not, looking at past case study briefly, I'd say seventy thirty, this goes through, because even the US Supreme Court just recently approved, I believe it was in the state of New York, that the mandate for their educators to get vaccinated was constitutional. That went through, I believe, seven two, I could be wrong on that, but it was approved.
That was New York?
US Supreme Court, for a case in New York. So, the US Supreme Court, I believe I'm right on this, now, if I misread something, I apologize, and I'll correct that and send it out, and I'll apologize the next one, but if I read it correctly, okay, the US Supreme Court upheld the decision to have them vaccinated. So, more than likely, this is going to be upheld, and we're going to have to deal with this. Now, the, the board, we can make a plan to do it or not to do it, my job is to tell you that if to not do it, it will not take long until we're broke. If we're going to do it, because we say the best choice for us to do is educate our students the best possible way we can, is how do we serve our employees and be upfront and honest with them of what the options and repercussions are from every decision made? I respect people, they want to make a decision based on their moral values or beliefs, but it's no different that there may or may not be consequences to that. As Joel said, we need to have a plan.
You could do the religious one, right?
What?
We, we can, we can do the religious one, right?
Well, there's a religious exemption that I'm getting more information on, so you have an informed decision about what that means, on whether people qualify and how that decision is reached, whether they qualify for that. It's just not a blanket thing that people say, arm up on that, you know, who wants to take that? There's more to it than, I don't know how much about that, because I'm not very, I don't have to do this a lot in my normal job.
They have to meet with each individual person to go through the religious exemptions and the medical exemptions, it can't be a blanket statement. They have to meet one-on-one with each of those people in order to come to a decision. So, that way, it's fair and equitable between all of the employees that decide to go that way.
Do you have a lot of paperwork then too, with it? Their paperwork, a religious exemption?
We haven't, I haven't seen the paperwork yet, it's still coming, as far as I know, but everything is up in the air, but what we were told today on our call by a team of lawyers was that even though this is being tried, you know, and being protested against or whatever, um, they say to proceed to make sure that at least you have a plan in place and that you're ready to go, because if you don't have a plan in place and you have nothing to do, I mean, this could be, say, they could, it could all be, say, it could be saying, um, hey, you still got to do it by these dates, and if you don't have a plan, you might not have enough notice to actually develop a plan, so they're saying to proceed as if, as if this is going to go forward.
My question is that when you're saying you meet in front of them, is that OSHA or?
No, it would, it would be the local, the local employer would have to meet with each individual person, um, in order to, to gain, um, the religious or the medical exemptions for that.
The sad thing is, this is so un-American, it just really bothers me.
So, what we have are timelines on this, so you understand what we're dealing with here, we have to collect, um, the verified evidence of vaccination that is approved, have that collected, um, put into personnel files, have that taken care of. Your medical files, yeah, and their, um, HR medical files, which we, HIPAA, which we actually have a folder for that, we talked about that today, um, for all of our employees. We have to define all the employees that we currently may not have HIPAA folders for that have that, to make sure we have that taken care of. Then we need to make sure that we have the policy in place, which you're going to see the ETS policy, it's come through, MRAs, put the stuff out for timelines and everything, we need to do and continue to move forward, um, with this. So, for policy-wise, as we're going to be working on it this week, um, Peggy's going to do a lot of plugging and stuff, and I'm doing a lot of other research on different pieces. We will move forward, we need to set a timeline for this policy. So, policy, and I sent you an email today, as I did research on this, because this came out Friday, policy two oh eight, section four allows for us to do the standard policy introduction over two meetings, which I would say be November twenty-second and twenty-ninth. Or we can do an emergency, one, our policy allows to do an emergency, one, due to timelines, I think this is about as close as it gets for emergency, we could do that either November twenty-second is what I proposed, not actually mean, but even if it's a special meeting just on this, November twenty-ninth with this. There is an opportunity, very specifically in our policy, that allows for the public to comment, not engage back and forth, but have a public comment about the policy that's being instituted for that. Since I know the November twenty-second meeting is a very long meeting with audit reports and budget stuff and all that, it may be best used for us to either set a, as I, since I sent that email out, um, set a second, uh, two different dates, if you want to do two policies, meetings to do it, or if you do emergency, you want to do November twenty-ninth, so you just have one night designated to this, because I think it's going, might take some time. A, where we fully understand implications was taking place with us as we move forward. And we'll send you out the, uh, um, draft policy that's basically open-ended with everything in there to, to meet the requirements.
Thanks for sharing that, uh, information, I know we have to go through it. I do agree with Joe that this is really a hammer on a lot of people, and, uh, very unfortunate as it is mandated, and, uh,
I mean, myself...
Thanks for sharing that information, I know you're obligated to do so and don't want to kill the messenger, but yeah.
But the thing is, I will not be part of this board then if I'm forced to, simple as that.
So, along that line, um, if there are a lot of people that do, by their free will, decide, yep, no thanks, and don't show up to work, um, and cannot, are kind of hoping that, uh, the message is sent and there's something that's overturned, do we have a contingency plan to keep educating students?
That's what we need to be working on as part of this process, if I have, uh, Department of Food Services, Department of Custodians, I have seven teachers in a certain area, or whatever it may be, um, right now that I know confirmed, this is, I shouldn't say confirmed, I did a survey, it's only shared inside, um, uh, our data, private information, I'm the only person that has access to that, just percentage-wise, we're approximately, I haven't checked in the last week or so, I'm sorry, I think we're seventy-three plus percent or seventy-five plus percent right now that say, without evidence, that they're vaccinated. So, that's three out of four. That's actually pretty good for most school districts. So, w- once we do confirmation of that, I'm not sure how that looks at.
This is just vaccinated, it doesn't need to be, the booster is not even involved down.
So, basically, all you have to do is a single Johnson, Johnson, or two doses of Pfizer, or two doses of Moderna, no booster required, um, the boosters are eligible for all educators. You may work in a school system and get a booster, including board members.
So, do we have a number of people that, whenever this goes down, because it's going to happen, if it happens, all the employers, businesses, we all have to kind of decide, when do we shut down the business versus when do we keep running, do we know what that number is for us?
We do know that in key areas, when we had, um, uh, distance learning, had to go to distance learning, the unsustainable number that we shut down was forty-one, but I think the unsustainable number is around thirty-four, thirty-five, I believe what we really, the principals were just looking at me going, we can't keep doing this, and we went three more days. So, I'm thinking somewhere around thirty-three to thirty-five is where it really gets tough for us, and it depends what areas they're in. Now, for us, what we do have is, um, we, we theoretically, we haven't done this, we could serve it, if it's, let's say, food service, we could serve it every meal out of one kitchen and deliver, we can do that. We can go to a very thin custodial staff. We can go to a very thin, um, thinner paraprofessional staff to degree, though that might be a little tougher, we have to get rid of some, uh, certain areas and, and, and shut down some stuff that would take place there. Where it gets very difficult is in the teaching field, where else than you don't have a chemistry teacher. And I'm picking on the chemistry teacher, because I know, that doesn't matter, I don't know if there aren't. Uh, I'm just throwing that out there, okay? Or a math, or whatever it may be, that's where it gets a lot tougher in how we're going, we would be able to handle that. Honestly, I get it that people, you don't, they won't get vaccinated, that's fine, we do have an option. It is mask and, and testing. You don't, you don't have to get the, I understand everybody, everybody's talking about this, got to get vaccination, you not have to get the vaccination. There's an alternative still to be able to, to work, which is a mask and testing. This is not vaccinated or unemployed, it's vaccinated or do this. Yeah. So, I mean, so with that...
So, the, if you wear a mask at the board meeting, that's going to exempt you then?
Mask and test once, once a week, once every seven days, a test.
A test for COVID? Suppose it's a false positive? How, you know the difference?
Well, there's chance of false positive, and with the PCR, take two negative PCR's to overrule a false positive. That's my understanding on that, but yes, that's possible, just like a false negative is possible. I have a, a lot of jokes running through my head, but I'm not going to say them, because I don't think they're very good right now, and taste and decorum right now, but I'm just really thinking about, realistically, that, it's, it's, it's opportunity for people to work without having to take the vac- vaccine if they really don't want to, and I, and I, everybody who's chose not to, I still respect for their decision. They have to agree with my decision and that, but we can still be respectful and go through this process, because you know, we're small town Wyndham. I go to church with people in this room, I, I see people at coffee in this room, I have lunch with people in this room, um, occasionally maybe even an adult beverage, but here's what takes place, is that we have to take the heat of the national politics out of this right now and say, what are we going to do to serve kids? And if my belief is not to get vaccinated, and I truly believe in serving kids, then maybe that is, I'm going to wear a mask and get tested once a week. Here's the protocol. If I have been vaccinated or I choose to become vaccinated, here's what you have to do to show that evidence of it. Very straightforward, there may be, I don't foresee many, I really do not foresee many when I look at the character of our people that we have working within our school district, choosing not to come to work because they have to get tests and a mask, because they've been able to uphold their principle that they don't want to be vaccinated. They're not getting vaccinated, we aren't forced to get vaccinated. There's an option, I mean, that's what we really have to think about. I get it, people get tied up in this, either way, I'm trying to walk the middle ground on this because I want to serve kids. I want to serve our community. I think we just got to take some of this amped-up national political stuff out and go, what's it going to take for us to do this?
To draw light to what you said, this is not the district mandating it, this is the federal government trying to force it down the throat, so, again, it's not the district, the district is getting forced to follow the policy, but, yeah, it's still, uh...
And, and let's face it, getting, wearing a mask and, and being tested is politics.
Again, I'm going to stay out of that, and I think we as a, um, governing body, and I'm going to say this once, we need to stay out of that. We got to focus our efforts, Joe, Joe, I just want, let me finish, we had to focus our efforts on what we're doing for kids in the community. We can take this stand, and all of a sudden, the board can say no, and we'll just shut down the school and all this other stuff, but that's not what's best interest, what we do. Reason we all serve, and all of us serve here, is the benefit of children. I'm, I said a sign by politics every day I walk in the office to make sure I serve kids. Okay? And I think that we as adults need to take a moment and step back and say, we're here for kids. I could care less about the twenty twenty-four election, twenty-two election, twenty-twenty election right now, I want to serve kids. That's it. And every time we bring this up, we think we're making a, a statement on something, but what we're doing is we're dismissing kids and the service we provide as adults in service. That's my view.
Now, Wayne, Wayne, we still don't have a choice, if, we have to do one or two things, number one, and number two is, what about our health? What are the consequences? Getting a, getting a jab. There's a lot of stuff out there saying that that's not...
Don't get the, Joe, if that's what you feel, don't get the jab, parents, if you don't want your child to have it, don't get it.
I know, I don't want the jab, but the point is, if I'm going to stay on the board, then I have to wear a mask and be, uh, take the test, that's not my choice.
Yeah, Joel, you have a choice, you have three options, and I'm just going to say this, and I'll respect any of the three that you choose based on your convictions. Vaccination. Mask and test. Not be part of the board, those are, I'm not going to, I can tell you which one's right or wrong, I'm going to respect your personal conviction to do what you're going to do, and I'll respect you for that. But I'm not going to sit here and grandstand one way or the other when I want to serve kids. May, I, I'll respect that decision, Joel, and you, you said a couple of times that that's what you're going to do, so be it.
Yeah, I know, I understand that, but the thing is, I, if you get sick, that's a possibility, and the thing is, if you take the religious exemption, then are you still not free to come unmasked and not take the test, you, I know you don't know that, but the thing is...
I try, I do know that, if you take the, if you qualify for religious exemption, there's, it only exempts you from the vaccine, it does not exempt you from the mask, that's already been, uh, court case tried on that, that's not going to qualify. You'll still have the vaccine, you'll still have to test, and you'll still have to mask, I can give you that answer right now.
So, we really don't have a choice then? Just one choice.
I'll bring as much information as I can, but I didn't know how many, uh, meetings you want to have on this, one or two, so I can set the calendar for those policy meetings. And I really think that the policy meeting should be separate from any other board business. Be my recommendation, whether it's one or two meetings.
I think everybody needs to read all the information they can get through MREA with the articles and stuff about OSHA and anything else, because they're staying right on top of everything, and I haven't seen much from MSBA yet, but MREA, which works for us out here in rural Minnesota, they're on top of it, and they're cutting all the reports, so, read your emails from MREA.
I have, and the thing is, I have also concluded that they're all partly political too.
So, I'm seeing, um, the November twenty-second, a regular meeting?
Right now, I advise against that early recommendation, November twenty-second, twenty-ninth is the timeline. I do not believe we should probably have this, especially with public comment, to disrile any regular business that we may have. We should set separate meetings, two separate meetings, or one single emergency meeting for this policy, that's the board's choice, I just, if you say two, I'll find two separate dates for that, and make sure everybody has informed about public protocols and things like that, so we're set for the meeting for that process. This is something that none of us in this room are looking forward to having to do, but we have to do it to move forward to educate kids, I get that. I don't want to be having this conversation either, Joe. But we're moving forward, we're, we're going to serve kids.
I understand, Wayne, the thing is, what bothers me is that, I don't care how you look at this, you're taking our, our freedom away from us as Americans, and we should not have to make choices like this, as related to politics, and you know it's politics. It started at the election.
So, my vote is one meeting, let's just have a single meeting, and we usually don't have massive crowds turn out, so, I think one meeting is probably the most effective way.
I agree.
So, I'll be looking for a date November twenty-ninth or later, prior to that, for one meeting for board adoption of the policy. I'll leave a three-day window on that in case the board were to table it and want to come back, because I can do that in seventy-two hours, so it'd either be November twenty-ninth or November thirtieth with, if that does take place, we'd be looking at, if you had to have a second meeting for some reason, because you couldn't reach consensus at that meeting, it'd be for that Thursday or Friday turnaround, because we have to have it done by then, otherwise, we're going to have, um, a lot more issues. In the meantime, we'll be working on collecting all the vaccination information per the requirements set forth in this, so we can get a jumpstart on that, um, and start that process for that information moving forward.
So, I moved that we have a special meeting to discuss that policy and approve.
Maybe an emergency policy meeting.
Right.
To approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, it was a few seconds.
I did, yes, sir.
So, a motion by Bruce, it was seconded by, um, Joel Bordelick to set an emergency meeting. So a motion by Bruce, it was seconded by um, Joe Boarderwick to set an emergency meeting, probably the twenty-ninth of November. Any questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Pull it the same. Motion carries unanimous. Any other business? We have the November twenty-second work session, which will be quite long. And then we have on a calendar, Truth and Taxation meeting, which is set for December ninth. And then we have the December fourth meeting, uh, meeting confer with the E A. Any other meetings, if you guys want?
Uh, yes, I just wanna make sure that we, you know, it's gonna be changing position time for our board. So people start thinking about what positions they would like to hold. And just for the record, I'm going to, you know, my position will be open. I want to have other people on this board grow and learn more things. So I, I think sometimes we just say, oh, Barb's been doing it all these years, she just wants to continue doing it. I would graciously do whatever anybody needs me to do, but I do wanna say, I'm going to, from the clerk, just because I want other people to have an opportunity to grow on this board, okay? But I know we will be, I will be collecting data probably after the next one to do it at the first meeting in December. So please consider what options are out there.
So our past practices, wherever you're concerned, if you'd like to run for a position, please contact Barb and she'll have that list for all the board members to hear at the same time at the regular meeting in December. So that way, all the boards fully informed what people are considering.
And if you're wanting to change, like, different committee, you know, change off, or your interest, I know I have people who are interested all the time in buildings and grounds, finance or whatever, um, and said, they're full, you know, people enjoy, they've been a part of it and they understand what's going on, but they also, this is their opportunity to say if they would like to try something different. I wanted to get that out there before we left tonight, even though it's kinda long.
Give you a heads up, uh, our, like, committee one, will probably be working on soccer within, uh, any area districts possibly, as I've been informed before, surveyed by a student on part of the Eagle Achievement Project is going out. So that's one, then if you're interested in that, that's coming up, that'll actually get quite a bit of work this spring too.
Anything else? If not, we're adjourned.